Animal slavery. Please stop that. Thank you.
Mr. Jimmy. Thank you, Chairman. I speak in support of the appropriation bill 2018. In 1718, the government has registered over $100 billion in surplus. It's the 14th consecutive year where surplus is registered, and the fiscal reserve has exceeded $1 trillion. So the focus is how we should make best use of the surplus and how we can invest into the carrying and sharing scheme. And this is what they call the new fiscal philosophy. While the world is changing so fast, and Hong Kong is a highly externally oriented economy, and we're subject to external influences. So how can the budget help Hong Kong take advantage of our present situation where it can rely on the mainland and take advantage of our own strengths? We must jump out of the Hong Kong context and see what the horizontal or the international horizon we can adopt. Is the 21st anniversary of the universalization, how can Hong Kong better integrate with the mainland, including Bay Area developments and about road initiative? I mean, these are major issues. And Mr. Paul Chan said in the budget that the Bay Area means three things to Hong Kong: IT sector, land supply, and new markets. In the next year, Hong Kong will have three projects commissioned: Hong Kong Chih Hua Macau Bridge, XRL Hong Kong Section, and the Lian Tang Hang Yan Wei BCP. Now, these projects will help form a one-hour-living circle between Hong Kong and Bay Area. And more people will opt to start up their business, travel, and live in Bay Area. Now, if we are to set up this one-hour-living circle, I think the conditions are ripe. We lack just one thing, and that is the policy. We need new thinking, and we need the relevant support measures. The business sector has been facing the problem of the money from the government not helping people do business overseas. If they want to do business overseas, they can't enjoy government subsidy. However, starting 1st of April, the SWD has extended the Guangdong Scheme to cover Fujian as well. That means that in the area of welfare, the government has broken out of that constraint, and there is cross-boundary flow of money. And three years ago, for the elderly healthcare voucher that was implemented in Shan Zhan. So Hong Kong, elderly living in Shan Zhan can also enjoy the benefits of the elderly healthcare voucher. As mainland starts to increasingly give national treatment to Hong Kong people, now Hong Kong can think more to remove the red tape. So more welfare benefits in Hong Kong can be implemented in the mainland as well. Say, for example, can we have cross-boundary PRH, cross-boundary traveling subsidy to help people commuting to work between the two places? And also, can you set up hospitals, schools, elderly homes in Bay Area? So as a result, the quality one-hour-living circle can be formed. And also, the budget in promoting industrialization also mentions only about hardware support. The government, I mean, the sector, has been promoting the use of fiscal and tax policies to help the sector. What we've been doing is against that thinking. I think innovation and technology has already broken through boundaries, and therefore, for tax revenue that we get here, and if at the same time for companies using IP and also technology outside of Hong Kong, if they are not tax deductible and if it's not properly regulated, then between the cost and operation, that would also not be helpful. And the administration has been encouraging enterprises to upgrade their technology base. That would also be counterproductive, and that's also not be good for IP trading. And therefore, our policy should have been changed, so that we should be changing Section 39E and Section 16EC. Recently, there has been this trade war, and that has already spread to the technologies sphere. And for SETTE, the mainland company that has been hard hit, and as a result of that, it has already gone into a coma state. What the US has been doing is that they are actually targeting the 2025 made in China and also the communication technology. SETTE is not just about our country. It has also run an alarm bell for Hong Kong because it emphasizes the importance of intellectual property rights or else you'll be paying a high price. We have to be able to innovate ourselves. We have to be able to grasp the technology. These are our lifelines. If we do not have that, then there will be risk to life. And given the fact that for external factors that are outside of our control, therefore, we will have to have risk management in an early stage. I've never doubted the administration's determination in promoting industrialization and IT. For example, some $50 billion have been set aside for supporting IT development. But then, we must not ignore a factor. That is, we have to strengthen Hong Kong as an R&amp;D and also manufacturing base. Well, many people might not know that what in the last century, in the 70s and 80s, Hong Kong used to be an important area for developing chips and so on. And when compared to the only manufacturer, that is AMLL, we are very closely to that. Most importantly, Motorola's Hong Kong lab back in 1994 was able to develop platinum ball, that's a chip. It was very popular, and it was also used by some 70% of the palm device. But then, the central government also announced that they're going to spend $10 billion on developing this Silicon Valley in Hong Kong, so that some six chips development companies or factories will be set up in Hong Kong. And as a result of that, the industrial sector was full of fantasy. And in the end, it did not materialize. And subsequently, there wasn't much development. And in the early days, we actually migrated. Many of these factories went to Taiwan and the mainland. And now, the US is waging this trade war unilaterally. And while we are actually enjoying the dividends, we should also think about how we can do what is needed by the country and also what is our strength. We should also make our contribution to the 2025 target. For example, for chips that are high-end technology, if we are able to develop that in Hong Kong, then that would also help making a breakthrough to the unilateral restrictions imposed by the US. What's most importantly is we have to commercialize our products so that we will have to develop an ecosystem and also a supply chain in Hong Kong. That's what we've been talking about, how we can develop these sectors. And when high-end technology products are defined as produced or made in Hong Kong, then that would be beneficial to our export trade. And also, in a trade war, we'll be able to take the most advantageous position. In a nutshell, this year's budget in terms of our new fiscal philosophy, we have already made a good head start, and that has already brought about changes in our fiscal management. But then, there is always room for improvement. And therefore, whether it's about integration and collaboration with mainland cities and provinces and also in terms of development in Hong Kong, we have to be more specific and more targeted in order to cope with future challenges. Thank you. I'd like to remind all members that in order to set aside enough time for the officials to respond and also to vote on the various items, depending on the actual circumstances, no later than 5:30 today, I'll be inviting the official to speak. And then, after they have spoken, we'll be putting the items to the vote. And therefore, whoever would like to speak, in particular, those who haven't spoken yet, please press the "Request to Speak" button as soon as possible. Next, Mr. Martin Liu. Chairman, I speak in support of incorporating the amendments to the part of the bill. The administration has to look at livelihood and also long-term development issues in particular. It should be helping those in need. Well, this budget has been able to do what the chief executive has been saying, that we have a new fiscal philosophy, and we have set aside resources, for example, on IT and also on healthcare spending. And that shows that the administration fully understands the problems that we are facing and also what is being developed. But then, last week, as I said in the budget, what we have set aside, $50 billion for the IT fund, is it adequate? And also, in terms of healthcare investment, have we been able to target at those areas in need? Yes, some $300 billion have been set aside for the next 10 years hospital development program. Still, this distant water might not be able to help put out the near fire. What about the long-term shortage of labor? So even if we had the hardware, would we be able to resolve the problem? Chairman, according to the latest financial position, well, this year, we managed to have $149 billion surplus. That is about $11 billion, more than the original estimate. Some people say that because of the extra cash handout, it's spent about $11 billion. I personally am not in favor of that. But then, it doesn't mean that I agree that the Financial Secretary should be looking at the 2018 appropriation bill at the committee stage amendment. The administration has moved these amendments. That is item 170 for social security recipients. We have this extra allowance. So that's about $435 million. So I'd like to clarify here. That is, on the record, well, under item 62, I voted against it. Well, that's a typo. In fact, with regard to this amendment, I supported it. I'm not against it. So, Mr. Chairman, so please do correct the record. Thank you. These are my remarks. Mr. Dennis Quo. Chairman, I'd like to claim a division. I'd like to make a quorum call. Yes, Mr. Dennis Quo. Chairman, colleagues, thank you for coming back to listen to my speech. Well, today, I'm speaking for the first time on the budget. In particular, I'd like to speak on Head 173. That's about giving $12.3 billion to the WFAS. For the reason why this is done, that's to set aside $12 billion. That's for the purpose of allowing the government to give this handout of $4,000 to all eligible persons. Well, Chairman, I heard many people, including Mr. Martin Liu, who said that, well, for this particular act of giving cash handout, they are strongly against it. I'm also against it. I'm not trying to antagonize the public. And I can also fully understand why there is this expectation on the part of the community, because the administration has been doing nothing and is just a big spender, doing all sorts of white elephant projects. And the public are of the view that, given the fact that you had hundreds of billions of dollars in your surplus, then why don't, if you're not doing anything constructive at all, then why don't you just give me this cash back? I can fully understand this sentiment. But then, as a politician, I also hope that I would expect you to stand taller and see farther and stand firmer. Because giving cash handout is a short-sighted and a lazy way of getting your way out. And this is not in line with the Hong Kong spirit or the can-do spirit in Hong Kong. Because when we try to invest heavily into the future, well, the one who is most hardworking is Lord Macleod, who used to be our governor. Well, he built the MTL. He also built public housing. We also had the nine-year free education. We also had the OAA. So all sorts of initiatives were introduced by Lord Macleod when he was governor of Hong Kong. And during his 10-year term, well, for three years, we actually had a deficit in our reserve. But then, if you look at what Lord Macleod had done during his 10-year term in Hong Kong, well, nobody would ever remember that there were three years when we were in deficit. All we would remember about him would be that he worked very hard for Hong Kong's public housing, education, and infrastructure.
We will remember the foundation he laid for Hong Kong, and which paved the way for our success in the later 20th century and early 21st century. That's the legacy of Governor Macleod. Why was there the deficit? Would people ask why, back in those years? Why didn't he give us cash handouts? Instead, he spent money on MTL and on the introduction of nine-year universal free education? No, no one would ask that. We'll remember the foundation he laid for our long-term development. Some members said that the FS has also invested for the long term, for the future of Hong Kong. Well, yes, I cannot say that this is totally absent in the current budget. But ultimately, the FS has resorted to giving a cash handout, which I oppose strongly. The $11 billion can well be spent on many worthy causes. Don't tell me that if the money is given to a certain bureau, the bureau will tell you that we don't know how to implement some sort of policies to spend the money, so you might as well give it away. Don't tell me that people with special needs cannot be helped. That some of these students require special treatment, such as physiotherapy or speech therapy and other therapies. We only have to spend a few hundreds of million dollars on these children, not many of them, 400 or 500 of them. If we spend additionally 400 to 500 million dollars on them, then they would get four or five treatments annually, and that would may change their lives. Because if they are not treated, then the opportunity is lost on changing their future life. Because if the treatment is not given at a young age, at the right time, the opportunity is lost forever. So why can't we spend some money out of the $11 billion on these children? And we are just talking about 400 to 500 million dollars. So what you call this long-term investment? What do you mean by long-term investment? If we don't invest in these children? In 2011, when you were given $6,000, can you still remember how you spent the money? Many people would have forgotten about how they spent it. But we can also do something else. For example, reduce the burden of student or graduates who are now paying their student loans so as to lessen their financial burden when they start to work. We can have more teachers so that we can introduce small-class teaching on a wider scale or on a higher level. We can also subsidize the cost of medicine of rare disease sufferers and cancer patients. We can have additionally 5,000 places in our CHE or 500 in nursing and caring homes. We can increase the number of workers in elderly homes. This is an issue close to the heart of Mr. Si Kau Chun because we are seeing many elderly people die while waiting for places in the RCH. So do we really have a long-term planning? Is this budget really about long-term planning? We can also extend the coverage of healthcare voucher scheme to those of us the age of 60 so as to assist them in seeking healthcare services. That can also be considered. We can also increase the OAA, the OALA, and so as to give our elderly population a better living standard. Apart from the disadvantage, in Hong Kong, we still have to make many new provisions, make some breakthroughs. For example, for those who live in remote areas, they need a subsidy in transport so that they can find jobs in every district. This traveling expenses is a problem for these job seekers. If you can be assisted, if they can be assisted in this way, they will be able to find jobs in different districts where we find offices or workplaces. And working moms need the quality childcare services. I have two children, one eight, another two. My wife doesn't work and can take care of them. But not every couple can afford that. Very often, we have both parents working. If a child is entrusted to a helper, it's much less desirable than getting them to a childcare center close to the workplace of the mother so that the mother can visit the child and take the child home after work. This arrangement is most beneficial to a growing child. Chairman, I don't lay any claim to in-depth knowledge of livelihood issues. In fact, I have been labeled as someone who are not really down to earth. But I make no claim to having conducted detailed investigation of various social problems and issues. But the government has a reserve of over $1 trillion, and the surplus of just one year exceeds $100 billion. And what I have been talking about would cost just a little money. And if you don't want to do any of this and you end up with no other measures but to give a cash handout, this is a failed government. Many people think that the government shouldn't just give people money. It should look for long-term development and investment. I don't know, after making all sorts of detours and investigations, you end up with this handout option. Although it's claimed that it is not a handout for all. I firmly believe that giving and receiving handout is not in line with Hong Kong spirit. I would like the government to really invest for our long-term future so that in the 21st century, Hong Kong would enable everyone to give play to their potential, and the elderly can age with proper support. And when they are sick, there will be resources to help them to get proper healthcare. This is what Hong Kong needs, instead of having a small sweetener at the expense of our long-term welfare sacrifice. The biggest failure in this budget is that the government doesn't know how to spend the money. With this remark, I would oppose the bill. Ms. Tanya Chan, we have the Secretary for Education. So I will be speaking on education first. When the budget was, speech was delivered, I said at the press conference that it seems that there's a certain hint of favoritism in the budget. And we need, we had to closely monitor things. It seems that whatever is related to the integration or collaboration between Hong Kong and the mainland, then the financial provision would be very generous. But for other measures, which have been in demand for a long time, we don't see anything provided. For example, small-class teaching. This time, the government is going to pay the examination fee of DSC candidates, which we have been asking for in the past. And there are other enhancement measures to ensure that the money is spent in the most cost-effective way. But should more to be done? But should more, should more to be done. Why can't we extend the free and universal education to the very last bit, which has not yet been covered? This time, a number of urgent issues have not been addressed by the budget, such as the teacher-to-class ratio and also pay scale for kindergarten teachers, and the increase in U G C-funded university places, and also support for S A N student. Later on, the Public Accounts Committee will be studying Chapter Three of the latest Audit Commission Report. Uh, that is on one, the, the report number seventy. Would like to take a look at the inclusive education for S E N students, and how we have been offering the support to needy students and parents. And secondly, we would like to look at the substandard school campuses. Before the current secretary assumed the post of secretary, Mr. Lam Tai-Fai, our, our colleague in the past, was very keen to raise this particular topic for, so that improvement can be, could be made. I know that the Secretary for Education is equally concerned about the learning environment of young students. And it's not a, any, a problem of curriculum. We have so many urgent problems which have not been resolved. But now, well, we see this project on the sister school scheme with mainland schools will be regularized. And participating, participating schools would get one hundred fifty thousand dollars a, a year. Their total expenditure is about two hundred million dollars. By increasing the nursing staff in schools, we only get two, twenty-six million for, for students with special education needs. They have a higher need for support than those participating in the sister school scheme. When I spoke on the amendments, I already said that when we discuss the sister school schemes, we got a paper from the bureau and, and the wording used was, is very biased. It said that mainland students are hardworking and and they're willing to learn. So is that really the case that this attribute can only be found in mainland students, but not in students elsewhere? Which are going to spend so much money on the exchange and, and the scheme. So comparatively speaking, we are spending so much on these programs. And according to a press report, a mother who has a child with moderate mental incapacity and autism complained that after leaving school, the, 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 the child have nowhere, have nowhere to go but to be id, to idle away time at home. But the support to a student suffering with autism is nothing.
So there is a lack of school places for them. So Chairman, I hope that in the next year's budget, the government should help more students with special needs and their parents. So more appropriate support can be provided. Because the Audit Commission Report points out that there are many students who need such support. And in recent years, say, we, um, have seen an increase in the number of students with autism and dyslexia. And the E D P, as quoted by the Audit Commission Report, said that because of the scientific advancement, people come to know more about such symptoms. So they identify such symptoms earlier than you, than in the past. Well, since the identification is done, then we must have the right policies and measures to support them so that we can have better integrated education. And we should also provide more residential places for these S E N students and their parents, as well as their schools and teachers. So assistance can be provided to them so that these students can contribute to the society. On top of education, I would also like to talk about arts and culture. Chairman, as I said in the beginning, it seems that a lot of resources have been devoted into cultural exchanges between Hong Kong and Bay Area. But in supporting local, um, uh, arts, we have the nine major performing groups and small-sized arts and culture groups. So an additional fifty-five million dollars will be given to them. So it's, uh, everybody gets a small share only. I was one of the members of the nine major performing groups in Hong Kong. And we have to be spending our money prudently. That is, um, of course, the right way. We have to be spending prudently taxpayers' money. But then experimental schemes can hardly be taken forward because of the limited resources. And their hands are tied when it comes to such experimental projects. The ideal situation is that we can ident, uh, find some sponsors. But that has not become a mainstream culture. The business sector is willing to sponsor more renowned groups, um, more high-level type of arts, more sponsorship is granted for them. But for the small and medium-sized arts groups and also, um, other types of arts forms, the sponsorship is not coming forth. So we hope that, that should be, there will be a change in that kind of mindset. Now, on the promoting exchanges between Hong Kong and the Bay Area, a, a lot is devoted to them. A total of hundred and forty million dollars will be given to that initiative. But then only fifty-five million additional funds will be given to local arts. And then an additional two, twenty million dollars will be used to promote a local arts. So there is a great difference. This is just one example. I hope that in the use of funds, the government should not be giving us a perception that it is biased towards some sectors. And then I would also like to share a concern, which has been a longstanding concern before you assumed the chairmanship. Um, we have been talking about this. We are talking about tree, uh, tree, and tree ordinance. This has, um, has been an issue close to my heart. And I've been trying to find the opportunity to move a motion to talk about a tree ordinance. But then, um, because of time constraints, we might not be able to move that within this session. Because originally, there was this motion moved by myself on vindication of Fourth June. So maybe this is the, uh, I can, I can use that my slot only for, um, June Fourth. I don't have the opportunity to talk about this. But I wonder whether the government is concerned about this. While trees, um, collapse or falling bring injuries. In twenty-two, twenty-oh-eight, the, um, Tree Office was established. Because in Stanley Main Street, there was this collapse of the Century Old Tree. And one, um, one girl was killed. She was supposed to enter the Hong Kong U. There was a coroner's inquiry, and there was a coroner's report. And then the government has compiled a report advocating for the establishment of Tree Management Office. Back then, the Financial Secretary, Henry Tang, was the Financial Secretary. And he was crowned with the name the Tree Captain. And back then, Carrie Lam was the Secretary for Development. She assisted in the setting of the Tree Management Office. So this, um, we are looking more after trees. And then we have a dedicated office. But they do have the responsibilities, but they don't have the authority. Because whenever a tree falls, then they will call the Tree Management Office one-eight-two-three. But then the Tree Management Office doesn't have real authority. And a dozen or so government departments are involved in this. And Chairman, you may well know this. The L C S D is responsible for some parts, and the Highways Department and other departments, A F C D, et cetera, also involved in tree management. Now, in that particular Tree Management Report, um, over ten government departments are responsible for trees. So it seems that you have devoted a lot of resources into it. It seems that you have a Tree Management Office which is coordinating among all these departments. But then the funds are given separately to the different departments. Each department comes with its own experts, and the experts will conduct risk assessment of the tree and then come up with a report. Is there a standardized way of doing a risk assessment? No, no, it depends on the individual department's approach. Now, of course, the coroner's report has been advocating for one department to treat, to deal with trees. But then we have one form, but then it is being taken up by many departments as far as a tree risk is con, assessment is concerned. It's not reasonable. And in twenty-ten or twenty-eleven, I moved a member's motion. And back then, I finally heard from Carrie Lam, who is the then-Secretary for Development. She said, well, that was, the, the answer is in ten words. I am still happy about it. And she says she will consider, um, seriously consider legislating on trees. Seriously consider. While they've never thought about it before, now they will seriously consider it as to whether legislation is required. That was twenty-ten, now it's twenty-eighteen. Eight years have elapsed, but there is no progress whatsoever now. Uh, the Financial Secretary used to be the Development Secretary. You know that nothing has been taken forward as far as tree law is concerned. And then the Director of the Tree Management Office has resigned, and there is no progress at all. Well, the trees are at risk, especially on private plots. Many people, uh, would like to fail the trees because they may bring risks. So Hong Kong is a densely populated area. Well, why I'm talking about the tree law? If we are to have one department which gets all the resources to deal with trees, and then you have the tree law to support it in law enforcement, then, well, that may be short-term pain involved in the process. But in the long term, the, uh, green, greening of Hong Kong can be taken forward in a more professional way. And in fact, a lot of landscape architects have said that they would like to provide their expert input at the early stages of development so that the people's lives can be improved. Mr. Michael Tian.
Chair, uh, Financial Secretary. Uh, my views on the remedial measure on the budget have been expressed. And when I last spoke, you have been clear about my views. I'm happy that I have continued my dialogue, have an honest dialogue with you all the time. And I must reiterate that we have an excessive surplus. You, you have a problem on how to distribute it. This is a problem, it's not a good thing. The root of the problem is that we have a problem with our tax structure. You know where the problem lies. Last year, you spent a lot of paragraphs in your budget to explain about the situation. You established the Tax Policy Unit to study into it. I know that this is something that can't be done overnight. But this year, you didn't mention anything about the tax structure. I'm disappointed. Every year, I will reiterate my demand until the day that you will have a specific response. I suggest that the Tax Policy Unit reform Hong Kong's tax structure, study into the progressive, um, salaries and profits tax system, shares tax, capital gains tax, et cetera, and also progressive tax on luxury items. There should be a fairer tax system. Those who can afford it should be paid more. You should widen the tax spans, tax base, and increase your revenue so that you can reduce your reliance on certain types of tax so that you will not be subject to fluctuation so much. And you will know exactly how much money you can spend. And then you can adopt more targeted approach and increase the recurrent spending so that future resources can be spent where it is necessary and to help those who are in real need on, on items which are needed most. I also suggest that that's a tax concession for self-occupied units and also introduce vacant property tax. Uh, I think it can help the grassroots and the middle class. I know that there are technical problems to be overcome, it's not easy. But I recall, um, Financial Secretary, your remarks that I am willing to go against the arts. Well, if you said that while you were the Secretary for Development, the same should go for you when you are, uh, are the Financial Secretary. I'm against cash handouts, but I'm not against the budget as a whole. I've been exchanging views with you. I hope that you can think that I'm a rational man. I will not compliment you for the sake of complimenting you and not object you for the sake of objection. Last week, I raised several demands. I hope that you can respond to those. But I understand that you have your own difficulties. It's not the case that you can make decisions on new policies at once. And for existing policies, and if certain boroughs we need resources, then you would be able to handle those requests more easily. So maybe we can have a net teacher for kindergartens, and we could, should regularize the subsidy for that and have nots. If you don't have a specific decision in the short term, I can understand. But then what about the community nannies? Well, they, they are there already. And I hope that you can give them more resources. You can, um, improve on the service. I hope that you can definitely help in that area. Those watching our debates on television now may not have heard about community nanny, this, this concept. This is another way to resolve the issue in relation to after-school childcare services. Hong Kong has a lot of double-income families. And the children in these families, after they go off school, um, no matter whether they stay in primary school and kindergarteners who are taking care of them. So some parents are, are forced to take part-time work, and you can't count on your relatives to help you forever. So no matter how many childcare centers you build, that's not good enough. I've asked the E D B and the L D B to join hands to bring social workers to schools so that the teachers' burden can be lessened. Uh, the teachers will, can do away with the administrative work, the social workers can help them. But it seems that whatever that involves or straddles across different boroughs, then it's a non-starter. It doesn't work. Now, you've got this existing regime already. The community nannies just come under the portfolio of the L W B. But now you are paying the minimum wage only, and people have to wait for four to five months to get that service.
Many parents would like to hire such nannies. While they are not willing to take up the job because the wages are too low, because that would not include picking up the kids from school and bringing them home. And if you're willing to increase the resources so that for this particular job type, the hourly wage can at least be aligned with minimum wage. And then extra resources can also be given so that they can also take public transport, so that they can take the kids back home. And you will also have to take out insurance for them. I'm sure many double-income families will be grateful to you. And then for each family, well, in the neighborhood, they will see if they can identify some elderly neighbors who are still very smart and mobile. And then, uh, they ask them if they'd be interested in joining the scheme. Because after all, they are neighbors, and they would find it very easy and convenient to just go upstairs or downstairs to pick up the kids and then take them to schools and so on. So you're just talking about, um, asking a neighbor to pick up and drop off your kid um to and from school every day. So it's very popular and yet I don't understand somehow for such popular uh moves, resources are not put into them. On the contrary, uh, well, resources would be put into things like um um life and yet not many people are interested. So we have this mismatch of resources. In the end, if you're able to give us a positive response, at least please do respond to my request for the community nanny uh project because it's an existing program. I do not see why the Secretary for Labor and Welfare would be against it. And it's also much needed by the community and the market. Even if I do not vote in favor of your proposal, then at least I'll remain neutral on your proposal. Financial Secretary, it's not like what um I said about your two amendments. Well, once again, Mister Chairman, let me stress again, why I'm against the two amendments? That's because basically I'm against partially giving out cash handouts. And then for the eleven billion dollars reserve or surplus, if we can set up a fund, then at least I will be able to get a return of about four hundred, five hundred million dollars a year. Then at least that will be able to implement what I think is the uh most needy uh and have nots. That is, they can uh get that allowance on a regular basis so we can uh make it a regular subsidy. And then for people applying for this, they be able to project the return so that every year we can do something for the and have nots. Then we will be able to resolve this problem, which, which one is more important? We are talking about those uh who are really in dire straits. Or should it be a one-off initiative and nobody knows whether this will continue next year? So these are my remarks, Mister Chairman. Um, just seven minutes. Yes, uh, Mister Long Chi, Mister Long Chi Chang. All right, we have spent over thirty hours on this and we are towards the end of it. So this is one of the speediest debate in years on the budget. But then I think this year's debater has been quite remarkable in a sense that well, in the course of the debate, on the very first day of our debate, I also uh gave some views on welfare. And I also managed to get the Secretary for Labor and Welfare, Mister Lo Chi, Doctor Lo Chi Kung, to respond to our suggestions. Well, it might not have been, been a positive response, but then in the course of the debate, um, it's also a very good thing that we managed to exchange views with the administration. With regard to the discrepancy between us and the administration on this welfare policy, apparently, we suggested that for O A A, the old age allowance, the uh the um age be lowered from seventy to sixty-five when it comes to the means test so that there would be a total waiver when you reach sixty. But then um according to what he said, well, according to the C N S department's projection for those over seventy, well, by, well, in twenty sixteen, uh, it, uh, there was three hundred and sixty thousand and then it would went up, it would go up to one point eight six and then by twenty, uh, so it, uh, by a certain year, uh, it would uh be tripled. In other way, in other words, in by twenty tw- sixty-six, uh, if we were to set that uh at seventy, then, well, at the time, the um, the uh average lifespan was only seventy-four. So when this was introduced many years ago, that was the um life expectancy. Now it would go up to eighty-four. So should it be adjusted um upward or downward? So the administration and, and according to Doctor Lo Chi Kung, the administration had no plans to adjust the age requirement for uh the O A A concerning the remarks by the Secretary. Well, of course, I found it disappointing, but we can also see that concerning the remarks made by members, they'd be prepared to look into it. But concerning the response by the administration, I'd like to say the following. At present, for people between sixty-five and sixty-nine, we have four hundred and ten thousand people about that number and some um uh hundred and twenty-eight thousand are already on um O A L A, the old age living allowance. In other words, um, the group, the number of people that would be applying would not be as high as what the Secretary described because we are already having some hundred and twenty-eight thousand uh people on O A L A and therefore the figure might not uh totally tally. And also, uh, you're just talking about two hundred and eighty thousand who would be eligible for O A A. And if the administration can plan now and if it can be implemented in a timely basis so that for this age group, if we are able to offer help. So by twenty thirty-six or by twenty sixty-six, despite the fact that the elderly population will grow, this is a reality. But then I suspect that we would still be able to afford it. Well, our suggestion is that, is it possible that from now on, well, every year, we're talking about over a hundred billion dollars surplus? And if you give out um cash handout, you might be criticized. All right, Financial Secretary, if you give people cash, you might be criticized. But then according to what I heard from members, not many of them are against it. All right, if you're afraid of criticism, then you can also set aside uh a certain amount so that for uh for uh uh incom- for upcoming retirees, they will stand to benefit. So what we are suggesting is that for the surplus, let's say a hundred billion dollars, can it be used to invest? So that in future, we'll be able to afford to pay, pay about forty, four point four percent of the expenditure will be uh used on O A A for those between sixty-five and sixty-nine. So why can't we set up a fund to resolve this problem? Secretary, the administration says that, okay, so we have the higher O A A, three thousand four hundred and eighty-five dollars a month. Well, if you look at this amount according to Doctor Law's calculation, then uh by the time when we have some two point one million people over the age of seventy, okay, Financial Secretary, you, uh, you might want to respond to this later for these figures. So um can we afford to pay them three thousand four hundred plus dollars a month? Or if you think that it's not okay, as Mister Michael Tian said, we might need to discuss whether we need to introduce tax reforms. And of course, I never thought about this as to what we should do about our tax regime. But then once you introduce this, if we go along the current uh welfare policy, then you will have to think about where the money would come from. You will have to do something now so that there can be sufficient reserve so that by the time when we have um uh a larger elderly population, we'll be able to afford it. Chairman, concerning the uh Financial Secretary's first budget, when there was a repercussion from the community, he responded uh very promptly by introducing this caring and sharing program. I think that that's very good. I'd like to commend him for uh this because he was willing to listen to the community's voices. So you call it caring and sharing and I commend this move. And when I went down to the community, I heard many people say that they were very supportive of such measures. Well, today we have this budget and we, I hope that it will be passed very smoothly because the, the people supported it. But then regrettably, we have to wait until February next year before people can apply. Probably that's because this is a caring and sharing program and technically there are difficulties. That's why we have to wait till February next year. Obviously, it's easier said than done because when you try to translate your words into action, yes, I understand there are difficulties because it's always difficult to please everybody. And if you want to really make sure that everybody is happy, you will have to give it to everyone. And then um, then nobody would be challenging your power. But then people also say that many people are disappointed because you're giving cash handouts and they're at a loss as to uh what they should do with this amount. Well, if you ask me, definitely, I would be donating that to, um, I would be donating that. And others said that they had no idea as to how they should spend the money. But then if you want everybody or most people to benefit, then it should have been distributed more fairly. You should have come up with ways to distribute it more fairly. That's why I am very supportive of the budget this year, including the amendments moved by the administration. For some colleagues, in particular, the Pandemocrats, they moved some amendments. I think they did this uh out of a political motive. For example, if you look at Arnold Hime's amendments, whenever there are things to do with the maintenance, uh, well, they, he would try to scrap those items. Well, I think this is purely political consideration, no wonder he burned the basic law. And then Raymond Chan, Mister Long Chi Chang, please do not go back on the amendments because the amendments, the beta, uh, is over. Uh, I got it, Chairman. I'm just expressing my views on this. I'm not saying that I'm supporting or voting against the amendments. I think that's most inappropriate. That's why I think that uh by this, well, at this juncture, the administration must consider members' views on next year's budget. The administration must think about how resources should be used so that more people can benefit. I think that's the most important thing. So with these remarks, I support the passage of the uh appropriation bill. Felix Chong, thank you, Chairman. Of course, we are prepared to support the budget and also its proposals. But then just now, some colleagues said that giving cash handouts is not right. Well, we also do not support that. But in practice, this year, after the thirty-first of March this year, if you look at our fiscal surplus, it's close to a hundred and fifty billion dollars. It's so much money, it's so much that whatever you want to do, you can do it. On the one hand, we can have a tax rebate, we can also invest in the future. We can also have cash back or give a cash handout to some people so everybody will be happy. In the end, the F S did not consider this cash handout for everyone. We also did not support it because our time when we gave a handout of six thousand dollars, what happened afterwards? But then this year, uh, we had known that there would be huge surplus and therefore there was expectation in the part of, on the part of the community. So other than investing in the future, what else can be done to make everybody happy right away? Of course, the easiest way out would be to give them cash. That's why, even if we do not agree that that's the right approach, in the end, when the F S decided that he'd go ahead with this, uh, that's four thousand dollars, we would be prepared to support it. Yet the administrative cost is too high. You're talking about a hundred, uh, you're talking about ten billion dollars and yet the administrative cost takes up three hundred billion dollars. Just the administrative cost would cost you several hundred million dollars. If you had planned ahead, you could have saved that. You wouldn't have spent it on administrative costs that way. And some colleagues said that the administration are just um that ha- has just, well, is only interested in white elephant projects. It's not just this term of government because starting from twenty oh eight with the financial tsunami, we started to have these projects. That's the reason why uh some of these white elephant projects can be counted towards this term of government. And this term of government has only been um in power for ten months. And if we can compare that, we'd be able to know. Then how can you compare that with a ten-year government?
The business sector would like to thank the F S for setting up funds to add S M E's branding, the dedicated funds for marketing and so on and so forth. These funds are helpful to varying degrees. And we also like to see industrial development and especially the innovation. We should persev- we should keep up the efforts, we should keep up the momen- momentum so that we can give hope to our young people. There's something that we cannot do, even if, when we have money. Or you have, you have money, you can build hospitals or elderly homes, but you don't have the manpower. Uh, you go to an A and E department, you have to wait for seven hours. If I have to go to a specialist clinic, I have to wait for two to three years. I, I don't think I can wait that long. And if I have to wait for a place in an R C G, I may not get it before I move on. I'm grateful that the day before last, uh, Mister Kevin Young, Secretary for Innovation and Technology, announced that uh I N T tenants can be introduced within a, a timeframe of just one month. What about healthcare, the workers, healthcare personnel? We, we don't have sufficient doctors and nurses. So you have opened this door for the admission of I N T tenant. Why don't you open another door for healthcare workers? We know that the population is aging, there, there is a growing demand for healthcare services. But of course, I know this time, uh, in the budget, the government has promised to hire all the medical graduates from the two universities. But these new graduates have to be trained. So why can't you introduce a healthcare, the workers into Hong Kong right away to help us, the same goes for R C H Es? There are no one who are willing to work in R C H Es. So they, there are no one to, there is sufficient people to care for the elderly residents there. And on, on the other hand, they have to wait for a place. And so uh such manpower problems cannot be solved by just having money. And now I have to talk about the M P F offsetting arrangement. The initial proposal is that it would involve seventeen point five billion dollars in subsidy to the business sector with a transitional period lasting for twelve years. So seventeen point five billion for twelve years is just one point four billion a year. So the government wants to spend one point four billion dollars a year to solve this problem with the offsetting mechanism. Well, it's not as simple as that. Therefore, some people in the business sector would like the government to provide the uh uh the guarantee to underwrite this liability. The government has a reserve for, for one trillion dollars and is not willing to, to un- to the underwrite this. How can the business sector do it? We need the four billion dollars every year for the offsetting arrangement. If the governments give us four billion dollars a year, then everyone will be happy. We need four billion, not one point four billion. At the same time, in this paragraph, in the budget speech, there's something to the uh support employment. That is to say, for those over six, the age of sixty who are unemployed, then the government can give a subsidy of four thousand dollars, a maximum of four thousand dollars for retraining. It's like the unemployment assistance in some other countries. According to some people in the labor sector, the so-called offsetting arrangement or the uh, the uh, is used to tie over people who are out of jobs for the time being. So uh that the, the money would be used to support their families uh in that interim period. If this is the right justification, why is it that the government can only provide a subsidy to support employment and not to provide subsidy equally for unemployment? You should do this for those who have just lost their jobs. And before they find a new job, uh, you may be, you should provide some help before they get a job. And then we don't need the offsetting mechanism. According to the uh representatives of the labor According to the representatives of the labor sector, that they need to get some protection for the transition from one job to another. So Miss Dr. Lo Chi Kung has said much about this. So much can be done instead of just asking the employer to show the liability. And one more thing. M P F is meant to provide retirement protection. Why is it that only the employers have to be responsible for retirement protection of all employees? Retirement protection is a social issue. The biggest responsibility should rest with the government and shouldn't and you shouldn't ask the employers to be responsible for all. And this budget uh has not mentioned anything about retirement protection. I've just glanced through this this report. We know that the population is aging and we have more and more retirees in the coming ten years. And now, uh giving retirement protection is is uh imposed on employers alone. Uh we do not, of course, uh we do not support introducing a universal retirement protection system. But the government should do something about retirement protection, given that you have a reserve of one trillion dollars and you are expecting surpasses in the coming three years. And I believe that the reserve will go up to one point one nine trillion. Uh the stock market is thriving, the property market is booming, and you are going to collect a lot of revenue from stamp duty. So next year, maybe the surplus would be one hundred forty billion dollars. So given this structural surplus, the government should be bolder. The government should give four billion dollars to meet the cost of the cancellation of the offsetting mechanism. Use five hundred billion dollars as seed money. And every year at a rate of return of five percent, we have twenty five billion dollars to help retirees. The government is more than capable of doing this, so I submit. Mister Ho Chen Chang. Thank you, Chairman. My colleagues, including Mister Leng Chi Chang, uh have spoken a lot about the budget, about the sharing caring measures and how best we can take care of different sectors in the community. And I won't elaborate on those points. Uh when I go to the constituencies, I I heard from people that the the that more should be done to help the elderly. For example, the age limit of the traveling, two dollar uh public transport fare concession scheme should be reduced to sixty so that those who have reached the age of sixty will enjoy the two-dollar concession. So if the government continues to have a a big fiscal surplus, this should be considered. And in this budget, the government has shown the determination to promote I N T innovation and technology. And we are devoting the hun- uh tens of billions of dollars on I N T. It shows the government's determination. However, I must point out that it's not about the investment with money and resources. Other things we need to tie in to develop the I N T as an industry, such as collaboration and coordination among departments. I joined the Leshkow duty visit to the Bay Area. I went to the R and D center in Dongguan. The support they were given was delivered through a one-stop service from the financing stage of a project to production. And the supply chain, the parts and components needed for the robots manufacturers would all be taken care of under this one-stop service. The mainland one-stop service is very effective in supporting R and D. And that's why Dongguan has recently been turned into an R and D hub with a lot of upgrading in their work. We have many R and D experts trained in Hong Kong, but after graduation, they would go to Dongguan and Shenzhen to continue with their work and they would be afforded a lot of opportunities to develop their business. So in order to share, to take a share of the opportunities, I would like Hong Kong to to be, to have a better interface with the mainland. For example, if for projects carry out by university, the government should provide some sort of incentives or arrangements so that they can interact and collaborate with the mainland. And the one-stop service provided by the mainland will be leveraged to help our research and development. And so these can be, should be done on top of funding. And every time I would speak on the economic development initiatives, we have a high value-added shipping sector. We have been waiting for the government to invest more on certain facilities. Oh, we have many ships flying around the world registered in Hong Kong. But our share of maritime insurance is very low, it's less than one percent for Hong Kong. But even look at the number of registered vessels and ships, we rank number four globally. So the government should try to deregulate and to attract more operators to Hong Kong. And we're not just talking about one particular economic segment because this will lead to other services to be provided in Hong Kong, such as arbitration and mediation. And by attracting such operators to Hong Kong, we would form a cluster. And under the law, only the director of marine can provide can 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 have, can exercise the power to help ship owners in certain way. So perhaps the power can be delegated to ship surveyors so that we can attract more ships to be registered in Hong Kong so that we can also attract businesses such as arbitration and dispute resolution. Would like the government to do more to help this industry. I see that the Undersecretary for Food and Health is here. So maybe I should just say something about uh all people, children with autism.
There are more more children who are suffering from A D H D. And the Chief Executive has said that resources will be deployed, extra resources will be deployed. And as for the waiting time um for identification or assessment and the child assessment service is very long. I hope that the government can devote more resources to shorten the waiting time for assessment and identification so that the parents can decide whether intervention is needed. And the last thing that I would say for the Lentao Link or the Northern Highway, as the Hong Kong Jiamakau Bridge is soon to be commissioned, we hope that, we said that we hope the government can devote more resources to improve the arrangement for these um highways. In the past, Lentao Link has been closed off for various reasons, say for example, strong winds. And together with Mister Chen Han Pan, uh we met with the T D offices and reiterated our concern. The government has promised that um there should be a review on the regulation in relation to uh incidents of strong wind. But you should also review whether this arrangement is appropriate because there will be impact on the public. If you close off the roads all the time, then traffic may be adversely affected. Lentao and Tongchung residents will be affected, those going to the airport will be affected. I hope the government can take our view, heed our views. And for major trunk roads, there should be electronic display panel to be erected. Uh motorists and members of the public should be notified at an early stage of incidents or accidents happening on certain roads so the motorists can change their routes readily. You should not tell them when, after they've got onto the relevant highway. Say, for example, in the western harbour crossing, you should also do this. I know that the T D said that has been an app provided to the motorists. But then the drivers say that they would not um look up the apps while they are driving. So it's best that we can have electronic panels on the roads. I hope that the government can listen up. The amount involved is not that big, so please respond to our request. I speak in support of the appropriation bill and the budget. I so submit. Doctor Cheng Chong Tai. Thank you, Madam Deputy. Mister Paul Chan, the Financial Secretary, has delivered this budget. It got the lowest mark since nineteen ninety-seven. And there has been very unprecedented adverse comments on this budget. He has also become the um the secretary which has got the wrong estimates, the worst wrong estimates. And the ultimately, we are having a surplus of one hundred and forty-eight point nine billion dollars. How come that you have got your estimates wrong by eight times? How come that there is this surplus of one hundred and forty-eight point nine billion dollars? And what it is now do, what is it doing with the budget? And ironically, this is a very controversial budget. Well, we spent the shortest time in discussing this budget compared to the past few years. I will um draw this conclusion. I mean, I will summarize my views. Uh this is a Buddha-like budget, is a very passive budget. So, Madam Deputy, I you think, you might think that I have overstapped the line. I think it doesn't come with good reason. The slogan that I use is comes from the Guangdong dialect. Uh you implemented a remedial measure, but it doesn't go far enough. Why did I say it's a Buddha-like budget? In the past two days, the property market has been telling us that Hong Kong is in a very strange phenomenon beyond our imagination. In Changsha, there is this uh Leichuk Estate, the the price per square foot is thirteen thousand eight hundred dollars. And now it's, we're talking about a five hundred square feet P R H unit. Well, of course, we can say that it's very accessible, it's near to an M T R station, and there are good support ancillary facilities. Do you think it's a reasonable price? But then, at the same time, there have been media commentary saying that we should, we don't just have the problem of subdivided units. We are talking about subdivided units which are big um like. And it's the rental is um it one thousand eight hundred to two thousand dollars in rent is a big span like subdivided unit. We talk about working poor, the wealth gap, etc. Well, these are no longer problems for the current term government. Are they not real problems? Or is it the case that you're just sitting like a Buddha here, turning a blind eye to these and doing nothing? In the past few years, there are reports compiled by private equity funds on twenty seventy. The Gini coefficient in Hong Kong is zero point eight something. When I studied, well, a figure beyond zero point four will cause social uproar. And in twenty sixteen, the official figure is zero point four five four. That means one percent of the rich man are owning fifty to sixty percent of the wealth in this society. So in face of this economic situation, this kind of living environment, how can you say that this budget reaches a pass mark? Now, there are so many social problems. Housing is one. I've not uh not talked about education and healthcare yet. This is a budget that seems come out of nowhere. Well, you spent several hundreds of million dollars on Ocean Park tickets and the secretary said that these um tickets are for primary school students and it doesn't matter that much. Shouldn't teach it, I mean, would the teachers be asked to buy their tickets uh so that they can go with the students? Parents, our parents have to pay for the tickets themselves. Well, the Ocean Park is partly owned by the government, so they are spending money to distribute free Ocean Park tickets. And then you are also waiving the exam fee for D S E students. And that's laughable. And originally, all the students would be exempted, but then there have been commentary saying that well, it will create some adverse impact. While you wrote out the D S E exam a few years ago, how come that Hong Kong students are asked to pay for this official exam? Well, Madam Deputy, you should agree to this too. Why don't you do away the exam fee altogether? So this is, I mean, this is um that is mind-boggling. And also, the O A L A. In twenty twelve, we had a debate on whether there should be a means test. And then bananas were being hurled and so on. We're talking about O A A, maybe we can relax the age limit and you should not have an age limit of sixty-five. And now we're talking about O A L A. Uh we're talking about the higher allowance on O A L A. How would that be done? First, you will be sending a green letter to the elderly, asking them to duck declare, and then then we'll we'll a a a letter in yellow and then a red uh will be sent to the elderly. Are you testing whether the elderly people suffer from dementia? Are you fooling us here? Well, the residents in the district have told me, Doctor Zheng, how come that I receive this green letter? I've not paid tax for several years. I think it has all to do with the problem of the government's mindset. I mean, what they do is mind-blocking. Of course, we have our own duties as legislators, or in fact, several um well, ten years ago, while I was studying, I thought that I could play a part in policy formulation. Now, I told the elderly that you are not asked to declare tax return by receiving this green letter. Uh you are asked, I mean, you will be given a higher allowance of O A L A if you reply. And what about the um yellow and red letters? Why is, why things have to be so complicated? We have the O A A, O A L A, and then the higher allowance for O A L A. And then you have the red, yellow, and green letters. Well, maybe you can have purple color for those aged over seventy-one, and then for seventy-two, a blue color. And maybe you want to test whether the elderly people are suffering from dementia. You should not do it like that. But then what they, the government does is really bewildering and mystifying. And now we criticize you heavily. You are only implementing patchwork measures. You are just copying the old formula from past years and then you distribute it forty to fifty billion dollars. And then you might have said to the political party, said that a cash handout of a ten thousand dollars be given out. But then ultimately, uh you didn't do that. I don't know why you were forced to stop doing that. So you have to make amends, you have to um implement the caring and sharing scheme. That only highlights um your incompetence. Hong Kong people are were discussing how um much cash handout should be given. But then Macau is giving up double your amount. And then you ta- you told us that application can only be accepted next year. Well, the residents uh told me, well, we will be starved to death in the interim period. And, well, we've been asking you to have a universal uh cash handout. You can save up on administrative costs, but then you also make the wrong estimates year after year. Well, maybe you would set up a, say, basic income committee. Uh whereby a line would be drawn at a certain amount. And then any amount in excess of that will be distributed evenly to everyone. So shouldn't we be doing that now? Li Ka Sheng is returning today, he said that. Well, a person's capability will not be able to change the society. We will have to uh work concernedly in order to change the society. He's he's speaking, he he's talking not to me, but to you. You've come up with all these absurd measures which only highlight your incompetence. Now get let's get to some real problems, healthcare. Well, in the healthcare sector, you said that the three hundred billion dollars will be um committed. Well, you are talking about the next ten years, you are adding new hospital beds. But the real figures that for these five clusters. That the bed occupancy rate is one hundred and thirty-eight percent. So in every district, um in some districts, four hundred people are competing for one bed. Or the um to be exact, it's four hundred and forty people. So, while we I haven't talked about the S O P C yet. The average waiting time, well, across all disciplines, of course, the problem with orthopedics is worse. The waiting time is close to uh two uh years, at least ninety weeks. Some can um be as long as um one and a half year and two years. In the Hong Kong Island, um West Hong Kong West. Because there are maybe because there are so many more women elderly people, that's their situation. Why don't you increase the recurrent spending on healthcare? If you increase a recurrent spending, then you'll be able to fix a problem. Of course, you would say that there are some problems with the healthcare system. And Mister Felix Chung raised this, I never imagined that he it is he who made this criticism. In the past few terms, uh we've been talking about the retirement protection. Well, where is it in this budget? Uh the population is aging, what will happen to the retirees? We've been discussing this for over a decade, the universal retirement protection. Several years ago, uh Professor Nelson Chow was asked to um conduct a study, he got unhappy. Because, I mean, you had some sort of uh divergent views with him. And then, what the matter doesn't appear in your budget, it's not deliberations without making decision. It's collective loss of memory, I would say.
So other than sitting back and doing nothing, is it an attempt to show that you're neither. Uh competent nor resolute? All right, um coming back to education, so we repeatedly talk about that. Student suicide and also school management. Or even uh student bullying and so on. And then the administration responded, but then even if you try to respond, you should not have done it. Just haphazardly, all right, you put in money so that there would be one social worker per school, okay? When you implemented, what about guidance teachers and counselors and so on? They've had years of experience and they've established this relationship with the schools and students, all right. You're now having this one social worker and for for one school. Does it mean that we will be able to eliminate student suicide altogether? No, that's not true, because you have to review the uh the school curriculum, the three-three-four structure. It's about the education system, but then, um sorry, has Mister Young Yuen Hong uh done his job? Well, what he has been able to show is that in terms of his competency and education logic. Um he has not been ma- been able to lead the community in this discussion on a mother tongue. Well, let's set that aside. The biggest amount of money under this budget, the administration has told us that, okay. Uh we've been doing well, we worked on the Chinese medicine part and also cyber port and so on, okay? So uh they are now working on mobile apps. Yesterday, we had this headline news about some four million dollars on the eight-stage. Uh Chinese fitness exercise and so on, all right, the company came out to respond. And they said that this is an A I app, this is not a simple app. And if the elderly has not been doing properly. Then uh the app would be able to tell him exactly what movement he should be doing. So Mister Paul Chan, have you been involved in this? Because in the past, you did practice eight-stage uh Chinese exercise uh for us. So the reason why this budget has not been able to arouse. Um a very heated response from the community, that's because we don't know how to respond to it. This is because this is because this is a neither here nor there budget. All right, I've already uh tried my best to come up with this description. That this is say a neither here nor there um or Buddha-like budget. So I am absolutely against it, this is a Buddhist-style budget. Miss um Mister Eddie Chu.
Thank you, Madam Deputy. Well, on discussing the budget, it involves the distribution of three areas. First, at the downstream level, um so I'm talking about the downstream level. It's about our surplus, that is the. Um revenue that we have underestimated, how are we going to distribute it? Is about how we are going to give out the idle money, so to speak. So the financial secretary uh dealt with that um by his amendments. So it's about giving out sweeteners and what or not. It should be done uh by way of the share caring and sharing scheme. And at the midstream, we're talking about the general distribution of resources. How would the money come from and where it should be spent? So it's ba- it's basically about our financial arrangement. At the upstream level, it's about how the power should be distributed. Well, at at the downstream level, I think we have talked too much about this um during the past few months. F S, I sometimes do not understand you, well, you suddenly give us this bombshell. All right, you have such a huge surplus and then the public expected you to um give them a cash handout. And then you refused to do it and then subsequently, you uh had the. Caring and sharing scheme, so eighty percent of the discussion. Different political parties are from this council, much of our effort has been attracted to the. Uh cash handout scheme. In fact, I've said this repeatedly in the course of this debate, I hope that this is the last time. That would be discussing this downstream issue, that would be quarreling about this downstream issue. How can we avoid having that sort of quarreling? F S, you will have to come out to say, all right, you have this surplus. And then um on top of that, that will be shared uh amongst everybody in the community. So uh that would also boils boil down to how you're going to distribute the money. You should not have um uh. Worked in such a way that we would be having hundreds of billions of dollars of surplus. Then we will be able to follow that formula instead of spending so much time every time. Uh on the downstream issue, we should be discussing the more important issue at the midstream and upstream level. For the midstream issue, Madam Deputy, all right, you're talking about the revenue and the expenditure. All right, for the uh breakdowns, um well, many colleagues have talked about this, I'm not going to repeat that. Well, the uh major issues set first on revenue. The reason why not many people are talking about broadening the tax base, no, not many people are talking about introducing new tax. That's because we have too much money. So why would we bother to talk about that? That's why Mister Michael Ten said that we will have to think about this. Because we have to broaden the tax base or else we wouldn't be able to increase our long-term recurrent expenditure. Well, I'm saying that we may might we might not need to do that at all, because. It's not that Hong Kong had a a hu- a thousand billion dollars uh reserve. Actually, together with the exchange fund, we're talking about some four trillion dollars. Financial Secretary, just look at this three trillion. In the exchange fund and also the investment return that we are able to get every year. In fact, should it be kept um in the exchange fund or should it get it back? Because in twenty oh six, we already passed a motion. That is with regard to the uh sharing of the um dividend from the investment return of the exchange fund. In fact, if you look at the H K M A, the former chief executive, uh Joseph Yam, said that this could be discussed. There is no um. Uh hard and fast rule as to how it should be spent. The F S does have the discretion in deciding how it should be used. Well, for the investment return of the exchange fund, if more can be plowed back to our general revenue account. Then it could have reduced the kind of constraint on us. What kind of constraint are we talking about? That's what Hong Kong people are most concerned about, that's our property prices. All right, in twenty eighteen and nineteen, if you look at the land sale list. Well, given the fact that we are in hot water right now and yet the Development Bureau is only prepared to um. Come up with twenty-seven sites and about fifteen to seventeen hectares of land. Uh would be for high-density residential development. And still, you're telling the people that are for public housing development, that's going to be a fortum. That would be um happening in the next two to three years, but then you have the resources still. You're insisting on selling them to the developers. You're not prepared to do something so that you can build public housing that is affordable to the public. Whether it's a public rental housing or H O S. So for such resources, you should not be doing things that the public would not be able to see. Because the Hong Kong government is so um flooded with money. Okay, Xu Ka Chen said that some progress has been made in terms of public uh expenditure. There has been a breakthrough because it has gone up to over twenty percent, the latest one being some twenty-one percent. But then I hope that the public would understand that even if it's twenty-one percent is still not high. Because if you look at O E C D's member states, they would be spending about or at least thirty percent. So at least in terms of public expenditure as a percentage to G D P, it would be far higher than that in Hong Kong. Financial Secretary, I don't know if you've noticed this, that is the legal secretariat, we have this researcher. Uh in library services units, they have just released a report on this year's budget. They have made some observation and I believe that that's something that the administration should take note of. And you should have responded to it more positively. All right, there are several points from the report that I'd like to highlight. First, education spending in terms of um a percentage to governments are spending. Well, uh it came down from uh nine twenty seventeen eighteen, uh from twenty-two percent to uh. About twenty point eight percent is a ten-year downward trend. So for different terms of government, in terms of their commitment on education, yes, the amount has been going up. Yet, if it's about the percentage to to G D P is a downward trend. And also for elderly services, in terms of welfare spending, it stood at about eleven percent for many years. And yet, if you look at the um uh the elderly population, it has been going up. So by twenty twenty plus or or after twenty twenty, it would be over twenty percent. And if it remains flat, then how can it catch up? All right, many colleagues have talked about universal retirement protection. When can we implement that? Given the fact that we have so much money and if you still insist on not doing this. Do we have to wait till the next major disaster like the SARS outbreak? So that everybody is uh in a hard time and then you would be prepared to do it. But then by that time, you won't have any money. And then for infrastructure in the past ten years, it went up by three times. So for uh for the P W, uh for the Capital Reserve Fund, we're talking about some a hundred billion dollars. So it went up by a hundred billion dollars and even for a single project, the cost is so high. Recently, there was a project, I don't know if you've read the newspapers, in Yunnan to build a bridge. They are trying to build a bridge above the Nala twenty in twenty fifteen. Uh they told us that it would cost two hundred million dollars now. It went up to one point seven billion dollars several times the original estimate. Of course, there are some technical difficulties, but then the trend is something that you cannot um afford not to face up to. So it's not just about um uh the rising uh infrastructure cost. So if it's going up so rapidly, you will have to face up to it. And also the uh R and L S division has also found this. That is, for the past ten years, very often the administration would set aside money for certain purposes and so on. So they tried to track it down as to where the money has gone. Apparently, some of that has never been spent or they just spent a very small proportion of it. Michael Ten also mentioned that for the caring and sharing scheme, you should have set up a fund. So that you'll be able to give the allowance on a regular basis to the end have not. In fact, well, um for John Zhang, uh he set up this two hundred and twenty billion dollar future fund. In fact, half of it has been used in investment, but then what about what happens to the remaining fifty percent? Well, for the hundred and ten billion dollars, if you can make use of it. You would have been able to do a lot more than what you can do under the caring and fair caring and sharing scheme. Which cost you ten billion dollars. All right, for the downstream issue, whether or not you're going to give handouts, well, we've talked too much about it. And then at the midstream, well, for the revenue and expenditure part, we should have talked more about that. And what should have been discussed or what we should be concerned about is at the upstream, about the distribution of power. At the highest level, what when I heard Priscilla Liu speak, sometimes it's just laughable. All right, I'd call her um the top um people fooling. Uh member, uh he would be stating. Something that, all right, she just talk about the phenomenon without really talking about the reason behind it, all right. She was never able to tell why this is the phenomenon, all right. She's saying that, all right, everything is very promising, everything is okay. Is it really the case? So has the public told you that, all right, we no longer have any filibustering? Nobody is making any mistakes and everything is all right? But then what has happened to this council, Madam Deputy? What happened is that you're not trying to resolve the problem, you're actually trying to deal with those who raise questions. Through amendment of the rules of procedure and the core issues, what needs to be changed? Should have been uh changing the distribution of power. All right, this council is not returned by universal suffrage.
And the government uh and uh is not uh returned by universal suffrage system. I want to talk about the distribution of financial powers between the legislature and the executive. Why did people have to throw objects or to the protest or to filibuster? Because legislatures around the world all have the the power to revise the budget upwards. But we don't have this power. So if we had this power, then you can you could imagine what would happen. Because the members will be moving amendments. Thirty-five of us would be able to move amendments to demand the uh the. Thirty-five of us would be able to move amendments to amend the, the adjusted provisions upwards. And we don't have to beg you, whether we're talking about the childcare mentioned by Mr. Michael Tien or the lowering of the age limit for the two-dollar fare concessions. We don't have to ask you to do it. We have the power to make adjustments. But now, since we don't have this power, is it going to be better for all? Well, no, the community suffer from the lack of initiative. My colleagues on my right-hand side should consider this issue carefully. Why do we have to support this appropriation bill, this budget? Or on what basis or what are the criteria do we want to support the budget? What's the mission of the pandas? I'm a bit worried about this trend. It's like I'm a worshipper. I'll ask Ms. FS to take care of my sector or my constituents. And if he does, I would vote in favor of the budget. But actually, the mission for the pandas should be like this. Together with the people, we should get the financial powers back. We should be, we should have the power to increase the budget provisions. We should be able to directly to get something done for the public. But we cannot do this. And then if we lightly support the budget, what would happen? It means the Beijing S A L government can use this budget to undermine the power base of pandas. So I'm going to oppose the budget, given the unfair distribution of financial powers. Mrs. Xu Ka Chen, as legislators, we would like to fight for more benefits for one's constituents and sectors. It is only understandable. For example, we've asked for any waiver of rent for public markets since we have such a big surplus. And we have also got legislative members criticizing the budget. I don't agree with them. Resources are always finite, but there's no limit to people's aspirations and needs. I believe the C E and FS will also like to find more ways to help the public. But can everyone get some help or subsidy? Well, this is something that requires a lot of intelligent input and consideration. It's been said that some people are left out in this current budget. And now, the government has covered with this four thousand dollar caring and sharing measure. And some people still criticize it for, for, for the lateness of the proposal. If you ignore public opinion, you are criticized, but you would do it. Covering three point two million people with four thousand, four thousand dollar handout, you are not still criticized for not doing a good job. So this kind of negative sentiment is not good for the community. We, and there are amendments proposed to cut the remuneration of the C E and the Directors of Bureau. Well, if we are, legislators are judged in the same way, that we will be able to, we have all our remuneration slashed. When it comes to overspending of projects, we should all look into the reasons. Is it because of the protracted process? Or is it because the funding application took too much time to process? And some say that these are all white elephant projects. I do agree. If we don't have such infrastructure projects, Hong Kong would be a rural community. We need the infrastructure to link up with the mainland and to explore the mainland market. On business environment, FS, I want to say this. We get our revenue, our income from business operations. We, we know the government want to cancel the offsetting mechanism under MPF. And it's, it's said that we should prohibit cold calls. So you should do more to promote a funny business environment. Many people, it's said that everyone criticized the budget. I'm also a Hong Kong ID holder. I'm, I'm not criticizing the budget. And when I call up some of the parties concerned, they said, well, the government has not forgotten us. They would get various rebates, profits tax, serious tax, and introduction of the two-tier profit tax system. Many people would support the budget, and that would include myself. Does any other member wish to speak? I now invite the Acting Chief Secretary to speak. Acting Chief Secretary for Administration. Independence is the key to the success of ICAC. We should respect the independence of ICAC and should not intervene, interfere with the management of ICAC. Some members commented on the internal personnel management affairs of the ICAC by leveling the ungranted criticism and accusations. Therefore, the government must set the record straight. In two thousand and thirteen, the ICAC set up a special group to look into the case against Mr. Timothy Tong. And at the same time, there was a complaint received against Ms. Julie Mu, the Director of Community Relations. So the investigation team was tasked to look into both complaints. After a follow-up discussion, the findings, which is a criminal case, the findings were submitted to the Department of Justice. The Department of Justice came to the conclusion that there was insufficient evidence to support any prosecution. And the Operation Review Committee of ICAC agreed that no further action should be taken. And it was, it came to the conclusion that the complaint against Ms. Julie Mu was not substantiated. And it was, then this particular conclusion was submitted to the Operations Review Committee for endorsement. And after that, the announcement was made. And subsequently, the ICAC tightened up the rules concerning the offering and acceptance of gifts and entertainment. And there were new measures introduced to improve corporate governance. And regular reports have been submitted to the Operations Review Committee. The head of operation of ICAC is a senior official in the ICAC. In two thousand and seventeen, following a change of personnel in the ICAC, the Commissioner and the C E gave a full briefing to the public. And the relevant changes in the appointment were made in for the, for the sake of proper governance and, and public interest. And the head of operation, post of head of operations were never left vacant. There were people acting in those posts, first by Ms. Lee and then by Mr. Yao Xichun. It was nothing special that someone is acting in that post, and it's not against any government rules or protocols. Financial Secretary, Madam Deputy, I am grateful to members for speaking on the appropriation bill and their valuable comments. And also thank members for supporting the second reading of the appropriation bill and also the amendments moved by the government in respect of the caring and sharing measures. And here, I would like to respond to some of the views expressed by members in earlier debates. Madam Deputy, Mr. Ji Hui Te thinks that apart from these surplus, the government still own four trillion dollars in the reserve in the exchange fund. This is a misunderstanding. In order that the public will not be misled, let me explain. As at the thirty-first of March, the assets of Exchange Fund came to four point one trillion. But after deducting liabilities, the net worth is just seven hundred and ten billion dollars. In other words, four point one trillion, among the four point one trillion dollars, only seven hundred and ten billion dollars belongs to the government. It's just like a property owner who has to repay a mortgage. And if the property is to be sold, the mortgage should have to be repaid first before the money is given to the seller. The Exchange Fund is there to support our exchange rate and to maintain the financial stability of our monitoring system so as to make sure that we have, we maintain this, the status as an international financial hub. So we cannot draw money from the Exchange Fund to support day-to-day expenditure. And Mr. Ji Hui Te mentions that among the future spend, some two hundred, a half of the two hundred billion dollars has not been invested. This is not correct. We have issued a letter to the Legislative to clarify the matter. As a matter of fact, half of the two hundred billion dollars have been invested in in products with long-term growth returns, which is less liquid. And the other will be invested like the rest of the money in the Exchange Fund. And we have been earning returns all the time. Many members think that the government is not doing a proper planning, not doing proper planning for the welfare and long-term development. In this year's budget, I've already set out the priorities in spending the public funds. And there are three major objectives. One of them is to invest for the future so as to meet the challenge, make preparations to meet the challenges of an aging community. In this budget, we have increased our long-term commitment in social welfare and healthcare. In the recurrent expenditure for eight, two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen, the social welfare and healthcare accounts for thirty-seven percent or one hundred and fifty billion dollars in the next past two years, the cumulative increase came, came to forty-eight percent. We are going to spend ninety-two point six billion dollars on social welfare or seven, and seventy-eight billion dollars on healthcare compared with the revised estimates of two thousand and seventeen. There are drastic substantial increases of thirty point seven percent and nine point five percent, which is much higher than the nominal growth of our GDP.
The budget has also shown the commitment of the government to improve healthcare and education, et cetera. For in two thousand and eighteen, nineteen, the recurrent budget for, actually has increased by six billion dollars to increase hospital beds and manpower. Together with the U G C, we would also be increasing the number of places for healthcare and allied health and manpower. And thirty million dollars has been reserved or three hundred billion dollars have been reserved for the H A to improve G O P Cs and also for the, for taking forward the next ten-year hospital program and to improve the Prince Philip Dental Care Hospital. We will make sure that H A has enough resources to employ all fresh graduates. And extra resources will be allocated to H A to train up healthcare staff. So some legislators have criticized that the budget does not make use of our surplus and to make long-term plans for Hong Kong. That's not fair. Chairman, Ms. Tan Yu Chen referred to an allocation of a hundred and forty million dollars to subsidize arts groups to perform in the Bay Area. And only fifty-five million dollars is subsidized to local groups, and that is a biased approach. That's a misunderstanding for the a hundred and forty million dollars for us groups to perform in the Bay Area. That lasts for five years. And for the fifty-five million dollars for artists and art groups, that's an annual budget or provision. And in this year's budget, we also raised that starting from eighteen nineteen, we will progressively increase the recurrent spending to fifty million dollars to support artists and artists groups to perform overseas and take part in exhibitions. Eighty, forty million dollars have been allocated to the Hong Kong Arts Festival Society to hire, to engage local artists to perform in the festival. Another five hundred million dollars has been allocated to L C S D to increase the collection in museums. And that will be mainly for purchasing local artworks. Chairman, Mr. Michael Tien referred to the Community Nanny Program, which is a popular service now. If the policy bureaus have to improve the service and the coverage of the service, I'm willing to give the resources to do that. And Mr. Holden Chow talked about further developing shipping-related sectors. We are now actively following up on that. I am confident. And I have the determination that our competitive edge will be substantially boosted. When the Legislative, while the work of the Legislative in considering the budget has come to the end stage, and we are just one step away from approving the budget. I urge the members to approve this appropriation bill so that we can implement the various measures as soon as possible. The joint debate has come to a close. The committee will proceed to voting of the questions. The committee now votes on the sums for forty-four heads to which amendments were negated, standing part of the schedule. I propose a question to you that the sums for heads twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-eight, thirty, thirty-three, forty-four, forty-seven, forty-nine, fifty-one, fifty-three, fifty-five, sixty, seventy, seventy-two, seventy-four, seventy-six, seventy-nine, eighty-two, ninety, ninety-one, ninety-two, ninety-six, one hundred and eighteen, one-two-two, one-three-five, one-three-seven, one-three-eight, one-three-nine, one-four-one-two, one-four-four, one-four-eight, one-five-one, one-five-two, one-five-six, one-five-eight, one-five-nine, one-six-two, one-six-three, one-eight-six, one-eight-eight, one-nine-oh, and one-nine-four stand partial of the schedule. I now put a question to you as stated. With those in favor, please raise their hands. Mr. Raymond Chan claims the division. The division ballot will be run for one minute. Please proceed to vote. Please check your votes. If there are no queries, voting shall now stop and the results will be displayed. Thirty present, twenty-two to four, five against, two abstentions. I think the question is agreed by majority of the members present. I declare the motion passed. The committee now votes on the increased sums with two heads standing part of the schedule. I propose a question to you that the increased sums for heads one-seven-oh and one-seven-three stand part of the schedule. I now put the question to you as stated. With those in favor, please raise their hands. Mr. Raymond Chan claims division. The division bell will be rung for one minute. Please proceed to vote. Please check your votes. If there are no queries, voting shall now stop and the result will be displayed. Fifty-seven present, forty-nine four, six against, one abstention. I think the question is agreed by majority of the members present. I declare the motion passed. As the Financial Secretary's amendments to heads one-seven-oh and one-seven-three have been passed by the committee earlier, I have given leave for the Financial Secretary to move consequential amendments to the schedule. Financial Secretary. Chairman, I move that the subtotal of four hundred and forty-seven point eight eight seven nine nine billion dollars, after vote number one-nine-four, sorry, let me start again. Four hundred and forty-seven... Sorry, four hundred and forty-seven point eight eight seven nine nine billion dollars. After vote number one-hundred-and-ninety-four in the schedule and be deleted and substituted by four hundred and fifty-nine point six three eight nine nine billion dollars. And that the total of four hundred and fifty point four seven seven nine nine billion dollars at the end of the schedule be deleted and substituted by four hundred and sixty-two point two-two eight nine nine billion dollars. Four hundred and sixty-two point two-two eight nine nine billion dollars in accordance with the decisions just taken by the committee in respect of the sums for heads one-seven-oh and one-seven-three. I now propose a question to you that the amendment moved by the Financial Secretary be passed. I now put the question to you as stated. With those in favor, please raise their hands. Mr. Raymond Chan claims division. The division bell will be rung for one minute. Please proceed to vote. Please check your votes. If there are no queries, voting shall now stop and the result will be displayed. Fifty-nine present, forty-nine four, eight against, one abstention. I think the question is agreed by majority of the members present. I declare the amendment passed. I now put the question to you that the schedule as amended stand part of the bell. With those in favor, please raise their hands. Mr. Raymond Chan claims division. The division bell will be rung for one minute. Please proceed to vote. Please check your votes. If there are no queries, voting shall now stop and the result will be displayed. Sixty present, forty-nine four, ten against, no abstention. I think the question is agreed by majority of the members present. I declare the motion passed. The committee now votes on the clauses of the bell. I now propose a question to you that the following clause stand part of the bell. Clause one. I now put the question to you that clause one stand part of the bell. With those in favor, please raise their hands. Mr. Raymond Chan claims division. The division bell will be rung for one minute. Please proceed to vote. Please check your votes. If there are no queries, voting shall now stop and the result will be displayed. Sixty-two present, forty-three four, ten against, eight abstentions. I think the question is agreed by majority of the members present. I declare the motion passed. I now propose a question to you that the following clause stand part of the bell. Clause two, Financial Secretary. Chairman, in accordance with Rule sixty-eight, break six of the Rules of Procedure, I move a consequential amendment to clause two that the sum of four hundred and fifty point four seven seven nine nine billion dollars be deleted and substituted by four hundred and sixty-two point two-two eight nine nine billion dollars.
I now propose a question to you that the amendment moved by the Financial Secretary be passed. Mr. Ray Chan claim division. Voting begins. Members, please check your vote. If there are no question, voting is closed. The result is displayed. Sixty-one present, forty-two four, ten against, eight abstentions. The question is agreed by majority of members present. I declare the amendment passed. Clause two as amended. I now put the question to you that clause two as amended stand part of the bell. With those in favor, please raise your hands. Those against, please raise your hands. I think the question is agreed by majority of the members present. I declare the motion passed. Long title, Financial Secretary. Chairman, I now move a consequential amendment to the long title that the sum of four hundred and fifty point four seven seven nine nine oh billion dollars be deleted and substituted by four hundred and sixty-two point two-two eight nine nine oh billion dollars. I now propose a question to you that the amendment moved by the Financial Secretary be passed. Mr. Ray Chan claim division. Voting begins. Please check your votes. If there are no question, voting is closed. The result is displayed. Sixty-two present, forty-two four, eleven against, eight abstentions. The question is agreed by majority of members present. I declare the amendment passed. All the proceedings on the Appropriation Bill twenty eighteen have been concluded in the committee of the whole council. Council now resumes. Financial Secretary. President, I now report to the council that the Appropriations Bill twenty eighteen has been passed by the committee of the whole council with amendments. I move the motion that this council adopts this report. I now propose the question to you that the motion moved by the Financial Secretary be passed. In accordance with Rule sixty-nine eight-two of the Rules of Procedure, the motion shall be voted on forthwith without amendment or debate. I now put the question. And Mr. Ray Chan used to claim division. The bell will be rung for one minute. Voting begins. Please check your votes. If there are no question, voting is closed. The result is displayed. Sixty-three present, forty-three four, eleven against, eight abstentions. The question is agreed by majority of members present. I declare the motion passed. Third reading, Appropriations Bill twenty eighteen, Financial Secretary.